I called at order the regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council on March 24th, 2025 at 7:17 PM. To connect with the council meeting online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any links at LakewoodSpeaks.org, our online public forum for public comments. We are leaving that online, that public forum, open online through the evening tonight and until 10 AM tomorrow. Anyone who would like to address the city will be given the opportunity several times this evening, depending on your topic. First during general public comment, and for those that are here that for a specific agenda item, those will be scattered throughout the evening. Will the clerk please start us off with calling the roll?
Strom.
Here.
Labure.
Here.
Ryan is absent. Mayat Guerrero is absent. Sharazai.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Anne Nystrom.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And now for those who are able to stand, we'd ask you to please do so to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Once done, we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
(Clerk) All members of the City Council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest.
All right, and that takes us to item number five this evening. And Mayor Protem and I are going to tag team this one. So we have a proclamation to read, and I will go down to the lectern. You're going to read the proclamation. And we have a couple of visitors to receive it this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. We'd love to invite down Nush Farjadi and Shereen Lankarani. So if you want to come down and meet the mayor. And I'll go ahead and read this proclamation recognizing Nooruz Day. Nooruz Day, whereas Nooruz, meaning new day, marks the vernal equinox in the beginning of spring and is about celebrating renewal, connecting with loved ones, and honoring nature. And whereas Nooruz is celebrated at the beginning of the New Year by more than 300 million people around the world and has been celebrated for over 3,000 years in the Middle East, Central Asia, and other regions. And whereas today, Nooruz connects people of different ethnicities, cultures, and faiths, affirming life in harmony with nature and awareness of the natural cycle of life. And whereas Nooruz is an opportunity to break down walls and connect with one another in the name of our shared values, and it was a reminder to honor the past while looking forward to a brighter future. And whereas Nooruz is the message of better, brighter days ahead, and a reminder of what connects us as a community. Let us join Colorado's vibrant Iranian community and other Nooruz revelers in contemplating nature's power, a renewal and rejuvenation, and wish them a prosperous New Year ahead. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Lakewood, I Wendy Strom, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of this authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim March 24, 2025 as Nooruz Day in the City of Lakewood.
(Clerk) Thank you so much, Councilor Sharazai. Thank you so much, Mayor. It's our pleasure to be here. Nooruz is a secular celebration of spring. It's been celebrated for over 3,000 years, and it celebrates all the best things in life. So we set intentions for a positive life through intending for health, for wellness, for reflection, for all the things that make life positive. So we are pleased and very proud to share this celebration with you. Happy Nooruz and Nooruz Peruz. All right. Okay, that takes us to, excuse me, stop talking for just a minute, and I can't talk. That takes us to our initial public comment period. And I have one sign up for this initial public comment period, Mr. Brad Bruce.
Hi, my name is Brad Bruce. Today I'm speaking here tonight because less than a week ago, on March 18th, the Israeli government unilaterally ended the ceasefire in Gaza and has restarted their genocide of the Palestinian people. In the last six days, almost 1,000 Palestinians have been killed by Israeli troops and airstrikes, which brings the total number of confirmed Palestinians killed in the last year and a half to over 50,000, 17,000 of those being children, all killed with weapons and bombs paid for with our tax dollars. Gaza is the deadliest place on the planet for children, journalists, and healthcare workers. Two days ago, Israel bombed Gaza's only specialized cancer treatment hospital, and just last night, Israel bombed the Nazir Medical Complex in Khan Yunis. At the same time, Israel continues its aggression, aggressive expansion into the occupied West Bank with 11,000 new settler housing units approved to be built on Palestinian land in the last four months alone. Representative Pedersen and Senators Bennett and Hickenlooper have shown us time and time again that they do not care about Israeli war crimes, as they have continued to approve more and more of our tax dollars to be siphoned out of Lakewood and to be spent on bombs to kill people on the other side of the planet. Four billion of those tax dollars were sent to Israel just three weeks ago. This country spent over $8 trillion blowing up and occupying Afghanistan and Iraq. Sometimes I like to think about how amazing our lives could be if that money had been instead spent on making our communities better. I want better roads, schools, and infrastructure here in Lakewood, not bombs to kill random people. Please pass a resolution condemning the use of American weapons being used in Palestine. Also, if anyone is interested in learning more about the plight of the Palestinians at the hands of the Israeli apartheid state, on Friday, April 4th at 6:00 PM, the Lakewood United Church of Christ will be hosting a movie night to watch and discuss where the olive trees weep. All are welcome to join. I also want to add one final point. Since the last I spoke here, the Trump administration has crossed the Rubicon into fascism about 30 times. They have deported 250 people without trial and against a judge's orders to an El Salvadorian concentration camp. They have continued to detain and deport students for pro-Palestinian sentiment and are currently holding Colorado immigrant rights advocate Janine Visguerrera without charges less than 20 miles from this room at a facility where ICE is planning to increase the number of beds by 1,000. Staying silent on these issues is not going to keep the crosshairs off of Lakewood and its constituents. Trump is looking to crush anyone who doesn't bow to him. If we let this administration disappear people without a fight, they will come for us all in this room eventually. Three days ago, Senator Sanders and Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez held the most well-attended political rally in Colorado since 2008, and it was held in the middle of a non-election year. I hope that was a wake-up call to you that your constituents are demanding that their representatives at all levels fight Trump loudly and publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, will the clerk please read item seven into the record?
Item seven, R 2025-12, adopting the Connect, Discover, Create Lakewood Public Art Plan.
Thank you. And with that, I will invite up Michelle Nierling to give us a presentation on the art plan. Michelle Nierling and team.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Michelle Nierling. I'm the Heritage Culture and the Arts Division Manager for the Department of Community I'm the Heritage Culture and the Arts Division Manager for the Department of Community Resources, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight to respectfully request the City Council adoption of the Connect, Discover, Create Public Art Plan. This is an aspirational guide for the future of public art in Lakewood following a 20-month community-inspired planning process. The City of Lakewood has a strong commitment to providing high-quality arts programming for its residents, and the Community Resources Imagine Tomorrow Arts Parks and Recreation Plan for All completed, that was completed in April of 2023, set a priority under Goal One to update our 2013 Public Art Master Plan. In July of 2023, through competitive bid process, the public art consulting firm of There Squared LLC was selected to assist the city in launching the Public Art Plan. This plan is a collaborative effort between the Community Resources Heritage Culture and the Arts Division and the Comprehensive Planning Department. This evening, I'm joined by Lane Godsy, Arts Programming Curator and Project Manager, Alexis Moore, Principal Planner, and Jill Stillwell of There Squared, to present the Connect, Discover, Create Public Art Plan. Kendall Peterson, also with There Squared, will join us virtually for the Q&amp;A session. So thank you again, and I will now turn it over to Lane Godsy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks so much for being here to listen to our presentation on the Connect, Discover, Create Plan. My name is Lane Godsy. I am the Arts Programming Curator within Heritage Culture and the Arts Division of Community Resources and the Project Manager for this plan, and it's really a pleasure to be here after 20 months of planning to present to you this project that we really feel proud to say is driven by community input. This plan builds upon the accomplishments of the previously adopted plan and charts a visionary course for the future of public art programming for the next 10 years. So for a little bit of context, currently, public art in Lakewood is initiated through a variety of avenues, and a number of departments are involved. Thank you. A number of departments are involved in planning for and implementing public art. So to make sure that we captured all of these various perspectives, we knew from the outset that we wanted to convene a multidisciplinary group to provide us input from all of these different stakeholders and sources. And you can see here from the slide that we did just that. This included the support of our expert consultants from There Squared and multiple touchpoints with community stakeholders, both externally in the broader community in Lakewood and internally across multiple departments within the city. The Create, Discover, Connect Plan will now replace Lakewood's first and current public art plan that was adopted in 2013. So now, with just over a decade of experience implementing public art through a plan, we're really reflecting on why public art matters. And it matters because it enriches the social network of our community. It creates an expression of our time and place, and it engages social interaction, and it creates a rich tapestry of culture. In fact, according to a report from the Americans for the Arts, among other things, public art is accessible and free for all and part of our daily lived experience. It enhances and humanizes our built spaces, and it's an important economic driver. All of this is true within Lakewood, and it provides us a really strong motivation for maintaining a healthy public art program here. In working to develop and updated and inspirational public art plan, there were five phases of planning development, and that's shown on the screen. We'll be talking about that a little bit more in depth as we move through the slides, but it was a way for us to engage the community within each touchpoint of the planning process. Ultimately, this updated plan serves as an approximately 10-year guide for future public art decisions, and it ensures alignment with changing conditions, administrative best practices, and current community values and aspirations for public art in Lakewood. By assessing the previous and current conditions and public art initiatives, we know that the goals from the previous Public Art Master Plan have largely been achieved, and we're really pleased about that. The public art program in Lakewood has matured into a rich community amenity. Some of the program highlights from our 2013 plan include the creation of a Lakewood Public Art Committee and site-specific committees that have helped residents have a voice in the selection process throughout all of our public art projects. We've created iconic works of art like Dance of the Indian Paintbrush, which you probably pass every time you come in and out of our building, and it provides a vibrant entrance to our Civic Center Plaza. We've created the 50th Anniversary Artwork at Addenbrook Park to commemorate the milestone of the city's 50th anniversary. We've installed temporary projects like Landmark, which existed across 10 parks in all five wards of the city, and provided programmatic elements that enriched the lives of our citizens and allowed for them to engage with art in their parks in creative ways. The collection has grown to more than 60 works of art. The 40 West Art Line has proven to be a really critical community connector, and of course, our partnerships with our community organizations like Alameda Connects, the West Colfax Bid, and 40 West Arts have flourished. So with our previous successes in mind, we set forth to create a plan that continues to meet the community's aspirations for a creative and colorful place to live and to visit. So I'll now be turning it over to Jill, who will be talking more in-depth about how the community engagement really drove the decision-making and the process throughout the plan.
Can I forward the slide? I'm sorry? Yes. I think, can you hear me if I speak from here?
Yep.
Great. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me here tonight. I am part of the, part of the There Squared team, consulting team that worked on this project. It was our great pleasure to work on this project and to work with this fabulous team, and we're very pleased to be here tonight to be part of the presentation and sharing our work with you all. So, um, community engagement was really a cornerstone of this project. We knew that the community in Lakewood is very engaged, and that we wanted to make sure that their voice influenced and informed this plan. So from the outset, we designed a series of community engagement activities to try to touch as many people as we could and give them opportunities to engage with the process. We did have approximately 1,500 people at our best guess, it could be probably more than that actually, that engaged with the process over the time period we, we had. And this slide shows a number of the things that we did. We had a great website page that had interactive tools that people could engage with that also gave people information about the project. We did artful engagements that popped up at community events from the Harvest Fest and Earth Day and the Inspire Arts, the Inspire Lakewood Program last June. We did a bilingual survey that was distributed both online and in hard copy to try to get as many people to engage with us through that, that process. And we did some targeted surveys to reach out to key stakeholders like business improvement districts and arts districts. And then we also did some fun mapping exercises in the Corner Gallery, at the Cultural Center, and in the 40 West Arts District, as well as a number of interviews and focus groups to really get direct input into the planning process. And we had a great internal advisory group across a number of departments with the city, and they were really valuable in providing us insight in how a program, how the program could improve and grow within the city. So through that, through all of that engagement and through our research, we really learned that the residents of Lakewood highly value and support public art. We, in our survey data, we learned that 85% of those who responded to the survey stated that it was very important or somewhat important for their family to experience the arts. That's a huge number. And that they want more arts and more locations. They'd like to see it in their neighborhoods. They'd like to see it in their pocket park in their community. They'd like to see it at gateways defining Lakewood, so they really just wanted more. And more than 80% surveyed said that they would like to see funding for public art at least stay the same or even grow. So that was really good data for us to take in. We also asked the community, how does public art add value? And we asked them to rate their top thoughts on that, and the responses were, public art adds color and vibrancy to the city, it provides free and accessible artwork, and that it creates a sense of place and makes public spaces more memorable. We also wanted to understand what types of artwork the community would like to see more of in Lakewood, so we did a series of engagement activities around that idea, and our results showed that people would like to see functional art, like benches or lighting, things like that, that are integrated into the built environment. We also heard that they'd like to see murals, interactive and kinetic art, and earthwork and environmental art. And then through the engagement process, we also asked people just to share their thoughts or ideas, words that they hope would reflect what this public art program could be in the future. And we've got a number of those comments in the bubbles on the screen before you, and a few of them are, they want the program to be different, to celebrate diverse identities and artists. And that public art is key to making the city attractive to residents, visitors, and businesses. So there's that value that we were talking about earlier, about what public art can bring to the community. I also want to share the next slide with you, which is another activity we did with, for this project. On the left-hand side, we actually, I'd like to recognize Rachel Kane, who was also part of our consulting team, and she went out and inventoried every piece of public art that you have, did condition reports on it, and geolocated it. And then we worked with your GIS folks and actually created this map of the existing collection. And what this helps us do is to see where artwork is clustered and where art is not, if you will, art deserts in the community. And then we wanted to find out from the community where they would like to see artwork in the future. And so we did an online mapping project where people could drop pins where they might like to see artwork in Lakewood. And we had over 100 pins that were dropped, and they're shown here where they're concentrated most, they flash as bright yellow, so you can kind of see where the concentration is from the community's perspective. And then we also asked our internal advisors to share with us where there might be potential art projects through future development, through capital improvement projects, and also some of the key gateways into the community. And so those are indicated on that map by little purple, purple circles. So these two maps together really create a wonderful tool for looking to the future about where public art could happen in Lakewood. So thank you very much, and I will toss it over to Alexis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Alexis Moore, Principal Planner in the City's Comprehensive Planning Division and a member of the project team. And like the others up here, really excited to be here tonight to present Lakewood's Public Art Plan to you. I'll be sharing a little bit more detail about kind of the meat of the plan itself. Through the research and engagement process, themes about Lakewood's public art program and the future vision emerged. Updates to the program's vision, mission, and guiding principles that are documented in the plan and shown on the slide reflect the community's aspirations for public art in the city. Ultimately, the key findings that were highlighted earlier in the presentation are the foundation of the core concepts and key strategies that help implement the planned vision, in which I'll share next. The first core concept is to create transformative art destinations throughout Lakewood. This core concept will be achieved through the following four strategies that continue to support the incredible art hubs that we already have in Lakewood, while also prioritizing new, new arts in places where public art is currently not as robust or is more limited as Jill shared in the, the mapping exercise that we conducted. Placemaking and easily accessible developer incentives for public art are also key strategies that will support the equitable distribution of public art that helps to transform and create these amazing art places throughout the entire city. The second core concept involves unification and guiding public art and placemaking initiatives. As Lane shared and alluded to, public art in Lakewood really originates in a multiple of a variety of ways, both internally within various city departments, as well as externally with the community and many of our partners. And there's a need to unify and guide those decision and implementation processes. So the strategies for achieving this core concept are twofold. The first is to unify and guide by creating a cohesive strategy for implementing public art that is driven by the city's public art program. And the second is to continue to forge impactful alliances by proactively engaging and expanding our strategic partnerships and amplifying public art throughout Lakewood. Core Concept C involves diversifying Lakewood's artistic landscape, and as shared, the planning process really identified that there is room for diversification in Lakewood's collection, not only in the geographic distribution of public art throughout Lakewood, but also in the diversity of artists represented, as well as the variety of styles, scales, and artistic mediums within the collection. Working with a more diverse group of artists can expand the overall vision of the collection and create a collection that is more reflective of the entire Lakewood community. Accomplishing this core concept means tackling strategies that are aimed at expanding the variety of art represented within Lakewood's public art collection, and also providing access and opportunities for diverse artist participation within the public art program to encourage a broader array of emerging local and regional artists represented in our collection. I think it's also important to note that, as highlighted on the screen, this core concept aligns very directly with the 2023 Imagine Tomorrow Plans focus, which Michelle mentioned, on equity and access as a factor in future planning for public art in Lakewood. The fourth and final core concept is to engage community through public art. As shared through the, the survey data and statistics from Jill, we very much know that art is a source of pride for Lakewood residents, and it is the role of the public art program to continually engage the community in the public art process and its collection. This will be done in a variety of ways, including ensuring diverse participation in the Lakewood Public Art Committee, art selection panels, and other community engagement activities. Also, increasing community awareness of the public art program is important and can be done by creating more digital resources relating, related to the arts in Lakewood, including online maps and resources and downloadable tours. Continuing to inform and share the success with the community and city leadership to build awareness and support for the public art program is also important, as is striving to create art that provides accessible interaction beyond static viewing to more meaningfully engage with the community. I will now turn it back to Lane to share details about the plan recommendations and the next steps. Thank you.
So to continue to build upon and implement the vision of the Lakewood Public Art Plan and to maintain a sustainable collection into the future, recommendations were made to help guide us in the program development and build capacity towards the aspirational core concepts. And these were devised through the feedback that was solicited from the community. The research and feedback from the public art plan indicated that community and internal support for continued implementation and maintenance of a public art program throughout Lakewood was really strong. Finally, it's really important for us to acknowledge the extensive community input that has gone into the planning process over the last 20 months, and we want to offer a sincere thank you to the community for all of their engagement. The Connect, Discover, Create Public Art Plan will inform the next 10 years of Lakewood's investment in public art, and it outlines community-based priorities for implementation. To fulfill the plan's mission, we will evaluate project priorities, consider grant and project opportunities with partners, and weigh community input. Implementation of the plan will carefully balance resources and maintenance needs with future project planning, and we'll do this through the annual budget process. Thanks to the partnerships with several city departments, the 2425 budget includes implementation of artwork as part of the Colfax Safety Improvement Project. We've put together an aesthetics package for the Sixth and Wadsworth Project that's coming up in the next few years, and we have the Art on the Commons Project. This is our rotating sculpture exhibition that will continue on moving forward. We also have plans in the works with Public Works and Streets to wrap in artwork some box
to wrap in artwork some box wraps, electric boxes, at intersections all around the city. And then we're also going to invest in some small temporary public art projects. Guided by this aspirational and visionary plan, we're really, really excited about the future of public art in the city of Lakewood and what it will do for our community by creating an inclusive and vibrant atmosphere to live in. Thank you so, so much for your continued support of the arts in Lakewood, and we're ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Not just for the presentation, but the hours and hours of work. Thank you. Mayor Pratam Shahrazai.
Yes, thank you. You mentioned it in the presentation, and it's mentioned on page 23 of the plan, but the reference to Public Art Committee, tell me more about that group. And how are they selected? How often are they picking something? What does that look like?
Yeah, it's a volunteer committee. It was established as part of the 2013 Public Art Plan as an opportunity to get public buy-in from Lakewood citizens. There has been a rotating group of folks over the last 10-plus years. We're excited about what's next and an opportunity to refill those positions as we move forward with a new plan. It's an all-volunteer committee, and what we do is we staff it in heritage, culture, and the arts. And this group convenes to do a couple of different things. One is set priorities and direction for how public art might be initiated from HCA in the future, from the city in the future. So they might say, we're really interested in this art desert. That art doesn't currently exist. Could we look at opportunities within the city to create artwork there? But this group is also an opportunity to vet artwork that comes through via other selection processes. So for instance, when we select artwork through a commission, I'll take the Indian Paintbrush, Dance of Indian Paintbrush out here. That's a selection panel that's convened by city staff, and it consists of stakeholders that are primarily external, but also city folks who have a stake in structural engineering or how the civic center is going to work. And we get community members, and they create the selection panel by which the finalists are chosen and the artwork is selected. And then it moves to the Public Art Committee. And that Public Art Committee says, hey, this is really reflective of the voice of the community. So those are some of the roles that the Public Art Committee holds. And again, it's all volunteer. There are no set terms. And that's something that we hope to be able to refine as we move forward through our internal guidelines and procedures. And that's an internal document that can change and adapt through time.
Yeah, thank you. We'd love to welcome this as part of what the Screening Committee supports with boards and commissions. You know, there's a lot of fantastic community members that are really wanting to get engaged. And this could be an interesting way, if we look a little bit more expansively on how we place people on that from the community and sort of equity and where they are and where they live.
Yes, and I will say, I don't think I mentioned previously that these members are to represent all five wards. So it's a strategic volunteer assignment that offers an opportunity for someone from each of the five wards to participate.
Great.
Yeah.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. I was intrigued by the three words, a destination experience. And it, you know, made me think of the art line, and that's a destination experience. Any other definitions or visions that we could latch on to those words?
For destinations?
Yes.
Well, I think we do that in a couple of different ways. I mean, I would certainly hope that as we continue to invest in the public art program that the plaza activation through the Arts on the Commons continues to develop in its identity as a destination of downtown Lakewood. But I also think we have opportunities through temporary projects, like the Landmark Project that activated parks across all five wards. So there are opportunities like that that I think are really exciting in the trends in public art right now that help us to create destinations with some smaller projects that engage the community through programmatic elements like an art scavenger hunt or an art walk. Right now, we're exploring all of our options for what's next. And that'll be really driven by a variety of sources, including community input.
Great, thanks. And then I was driving the other day at a stop sign. I looked over and I saw a box wrap. And I don't remember where I was, but it just made me laugh. But here's this cowboy. And then right next to it was another box with, I think, a windmill or something. It was just so cute.
At Garrison, I think.
Yeah, probably. And so I wonder, are those box wraps rotating? Do they hit, do you change them from one place to another? So.
Right. So the great thing about box wraps is they actually tend to last quite a bit longer than you might imagine. We've had some box wraps up for going on 15 years. Over 10 years, that are still doing their job and creating a really fun moment in people's driving experience. These box wraps that we're looking to invest in with Public Works and Streets, they'll be a short-term investment. We're hoping to get 10 years out of them. And the idea is to prioritize two in each ward so that we have new and exciting artwork happening. They won't physically rotate, but think about it like an opportunity each year to evaluate where artwork is needed the most and could use a little color.
Great, it's a great idea. Thank you. Thank you for listening to the community, once again showing that we are sensitive to what the community wants. And it's great that the community has had such input and that the community values public art. So thank you for all your efforts here.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open public comment. We may have a little bit, but for more discussion, we do have a vote to place on this tonight. So I don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Do we have anyone that wants to speak to this issue? No, okay. City Council, do we have any more questions? Or are we ready for a motion? Any more questions? May I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-12.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Go ahead, please cast your votes. Oh, where's Lo? Lo's... Thumbs up. Okay, and with that, we have, that passes unanimously. Seven yeses, zero noes. Thank you again for all of your work with us.
Thank you all so much, really appreciate it.
Okay, will the city clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda is comprised of the following items. Item 8A, R2025-13, approving an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation.
Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you? I didn't offer the opportunity for council to poll anything.
Oh, you're right.
Do we have anyone that wants to poll any items from the consent agenda? No, okay, all right, please commence.
Item 8A, R2025-13, approving an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Colfax Department of Transportation for the Colfax Transportation Safety Project. Item 8B, R2025-14, appointing members to the Victim Assistance Compensation Board. Item 8C, R2025, excuse me, R2024-15, reappointing members of the Lakewood Advisory Commission. Item 8D, R2025-16, reappointing a member of the Lakewood Historic Preservation Commission. 8E, R2025-17, appointing and reappointing members of the Lakewood Planning Commission. Item 9A, O2025-12, declaring the intent of the city of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for the construction of the West First Avenue and Depew Street local drainage project and authorizing negotiations with property owners' acceptance of conveyance instruments, condemnation of real property interests, subject to further council approval. Item 9B, O2025-13, declaring the intent of the city of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for the construction of the West Third Avenue local drainage project and authorizing negotiations with the property owners' acceptance of conveyance instruments and condemnation of real property interests subject to further council approval.
Okay, thank you. I likewise have no one signed up to speak on the consent agenda this evening. Do we have anyone that would like to sign up to speak on the consent agenda?
It is.
Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead, may I have a motion, please?
Mayor Strom, I move to order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance and for the adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And the second, do we have any council questions or debate? Counselor Cruz, then Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. Regarding the piece around updating our policies and procedures? Nope?
Oh, I think that's the next item.
Sorry. Retracted, my apologies.
Counselor Sinks.
I was curious if we could read the names of those people that are... You will. Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more hands up, we'll go ahead and please cast your vote.
And Mayor, may I let you know that the Resolution 2024-15, that's a typo, and it'll be corrected to 2025-15. So it's just something that we automatically do if we see a typo.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lo is a yes. All right, and that passes seven yeses and zero noes. And before we move on to the next item, I will hand over the floor to your Mayor Pratam Shahrazai, who also serves as the Chair of our Screening Committee.
Yes, thank you. This consent agenda includes quite a few members of the community who have stepped up to serve on various boards and commissions. I want to thank members of the Screening Committee. We had a couple of long nights over the last few weeks. Some of these folks have been waiting since the start of the year to get through that interview process. And so, as always, just a lot of gratitude for the community members that step up in these spaces and wanted to recognize and read into the record these new members of our boards and commissions, starting with the Victim Assistant Compensation Board, welcoming Matthew Baines, Donna DeVisser, Devin Myers. And the Lakewood Advisory Commission has two reappointments of Ms. Elizabeth Mullenar and Glenn Wedok. The Historic Preservation Commission has a reappointment of John Hostiger. And then finally, the Planning Commission welcomes reappointment to Mr. Kip Kolkmeyer, Jenny O'Neill, and then welcoming new member Topher Williams. So again, thank you all so much for stepping up in your service.
Thank you, Mayor Pratam. All right, Mr. Clerk, will you please read item 10A into the record?
Second reading and public hearing for item 10A, O2025-9, repealing and replacing Title IV of the Lakewood Municipal Code regarding the Personnel Policies Code for the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
Thank you. And I didn't mention at the onset of our meeting, some of the items that we're discussing tonight do also have presentations. And there's additional information, staff memos, lots of background information available also on LakewoodSpeaks.org. So if you're following any of these topics and want to better understand what we're talking about, you can find that on LakewoodSpeaks.org if you'd like to as well. With that, we will go ahead, we do not have a presentation from staff this evening. There is, however, a presentation that was made available to everyone on Lakewood Speaks for this topic. Do we have any council questions on this issue? Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, we've arrived at the correct time for my question. I just wanted to ask, because it came up on Lakewood Speaks, and I'm curious how this ordinance relates to our family leave policies and what those look like.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Corey Peterson. I'm the Chief of Operational Services for the city of Lakewood and dual-headed as the HR Director as it applies to this personnel policy. And to my left is Megan Garcia Ortiz, who is our HR manager. And she's really the expert on our FMLA. But I will just really quickly summarize how this plays into the current policies and procedures. For FMLA in particular, being that's a federal law, the state is obviously in full compliance with the FMLA. We also allow employees to individually adopt or enter into and enroll individually in the state's family program, which provides paternity and maternity leave for employees who have not been here long enough to yet qualify for FMLA. And really, back to the question that was posted online, this is really not a change in addition or subtractive any benefits. It's just aligning those responsibilities that are in the charter, subsection 3, that are responsible to the city manager under her administrative regulation practice and leaving those that are required by the charter that are the merit-based ones for council in the personnel policies to allow us to be more flexible, responsible, and reactive to the numerous changes that the state has implemented over the past five years.
Thank you, that's helpful. I know this was, a couple of constituents asked about it. So thank you for clarifying that. And I know in a long document, some of the context can get missed, so thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, seeing no more hands up, we'll go ahead and open public comment on this agenda item. I do have one community member signed up for public comment, and that's Mr. Bradley Bruce.
Hi, my name is Brad Bruce. I live in Ward 2. I think my comment was mostly answered by the response, but I just wanted to really reiterate that family medical leave is super important, especially for newborns and new parents to spend sufficient time with their new parents. We live in a country with some of the worst family medical leave policies in the world. And I think it is important to be very... I think it's just important to be very specific on giving new parents family medical leave. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2025-9 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. And a second public hearing is now closed. With that, do we have any council questions? And I see Counselor Lo's hands up.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Just a very quick comment. One question I did get on this that I thought I would just very briefly clarify. There is, one of the many changes that is made in this ordinance is to sort of strike out the provision that talks about setting the salary for the city manager. One of the things I noticed when I went back and looked at the charter and was reminded of is that it's actually already in the Lakewood City Charter, where it says, shall appoint a city manager who shall serve at the pleasure of the city council and the salary fixed by the city council. And there's also a separate provision that talks about the annual performance review. So I just thought, for the benefit of those looking and wondering about why that got struck out, I would lift up that all of that is already in the charter and the fact, including the fact that we set the city manager's salary to an annual performance review. And ultimately, the city manager reports to the city council. That's all in the charter. So if these folks are wondering about that, that's covered.
Thank you, Counselor Lo. Any other council comments or questions? All right, with that then, please go ahead and cast your vote. All right, with that then, please go ahead and cast your vote. All right, that passes with six yeses and one no, the no being LeBir. Will a clerk please read Item 10B into the record?
Second hearing and public... Excuse me. Second reading and public hearing for Item 10B, oh, 2025-10, authorizing an internal loan agreement in the form of a transfer of general funds in the amount of $19,682,727 to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and authorizing the expenditure of these funds by the Division of Public Works via the Mile High Flood District for major drainageway improvements of the North Dry Gulch area of Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this, we do have a presentation. So I will welcome up front Director Max Kirschbaum and Ray Hill, our city engineer.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Just very briefly, this is a topic that we felt deserved a little additional attention because of the size and the scope of the ask. And I would just point out that, in addition to the mayor's comments earlier about numerous resources available on Lakewood Speaks, our city engineer for capital projects and utilities, Ray Hill, will give a summary presentation of the Lakewood Speaks presentation that is posted. And just as a lead-in to Ray's comments, this topic is well-known in the community, well-known to city council. It's been in the works in one form or another for 10 to 15 years, and it's been the subject of budget items and budget adoption for the last several years. So with that, Ray, I'll turn it over to you.
Right. Thank you, Director Kirschbaum. I'm Ray Hill, city engineer of Capital Projects and Utilities, and I have a presentation for you on Item 10B in tonight's agenda. But first, a little overview of the project. The North Dry Gulch Project impacts... Is a floodplain that impacts about 150 properties within the North Dry Gulch floodplain. As you can see here, that floodplain impacts all of those buildings and everything that you see there, along with 130 buildings, 23 street crossings. So as the northern area of Lakewood urbanized, we weren't thinking as much about where drainage went, and that drainage just continued to stay on top of our streets with a very minor kind of storm sewer to be able to convey that. So the result is flooding in many of our neighbors' properties, and this project will alleviate that flooding in the 100-year floodplain. The North Dry Gulch Project is proposing a large conduit storm sewer system. One phase of it is already complete on 14th Avenue. That was completed in December of last year. Now we are moving on to the second phase, which is already under construction, and we'll be seeing a crossing on Colfax Avenue right at Newland Street within the next month. That construction is going to continue through into this summer. Then we're going to see phases three and four as are depicted on the slide there later this year and continuing through 2027. Community engagement on this project. We continue to meet with the West Colfax Community Association. We regularly send updates to the association even when we're not in person and on the agenda, and when we can get onto the agenda, we do regular updates there. Ahead of our construction phases, we send out notifications to impacted properties and property owners and residents that are in the surrounding area. And we've done that on 14th Avenue as well as on this recent beginning project, the Phase Two project. We also have a project website, northdrygulch.com, pretty easy to remember. That website also has a link back to our website, which has additional information. So from those two websites, you'll be able to find construction updates, where are we, even some nice aerial views from drones to see, you know, where we may be excavating and to be able to see from a different kind of perspective the improvements that are being made. If you haven't been on the city website for North Dry Gulch, there's also a long timeline of, you know, the genesis of this project and the needs for it, as well as community engagement going back a decade or more on that. Now getting to the meat of tonight's agenda item, the project costs and the funding for this project. Funding for this project is primarily through the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Twenty-nine, a little bit under $29 million, has been saved and planned to be saved through 2027. We have a great partner in Mile High Flood District who has continued to fund this project on their side as well. We partner funds at approximately $775,000 a year, and that has continued since 2009. And they've continued to put... We transfer our funds to their account, and as those funds have continued to build up, we have accrued interest in that account, which we also plan to devote to the construction of the project, which is shown there on the slide at $1.3 million. So not a small amount. Tonight on the agenda is an interfund transfer in the form of a loan between the General Fund and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund in the amount of $19,682,727. And I'll speak a little bit more about the terms of that agreement now. As I mentioned, I have already mentioned that principal amount, that the interest rate is a fixed interest rate of 2% over a 20-year term, and our annual payments for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund back to the General Fund is in the amount of $1.203,731 each year. This amount has been budgeted in the approved 2025 budget, and the annual payment can be made from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund without impacting our operational services. So the... Oh, excuse me. The Public Works Department's recommendation is that we approve... That you approve the loan agreement for that so that we can continue on our construction of the North Dry Gulch drainageway improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Mayor Protem Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify, because this may come up in future years, but to say it out loud, the Enterprise Fund, what goes into it is from stormwater and sewer fees, and that goes to support it. But now we'll be paying back a loan. Is there any special treatment this council needs to do to allow that to happen, or is that okay? Because this is a loan that we're sort of moving around from the General Fund.
My understanding is that, since it is a loan, that does not impact the enterprise status of the Stormwater Enterprise, and that allows us to be able to take in those funds, use them as specified, and then continue to repay that back to the General Fund.
The only thing needed as part of the attachment to this, the staff memo this evening, is that loan agreement that just sets the terms between the General Fund and the Stormwater Utility. It does operate as an enterprise fund, but as such, it can attain debt, and in this case, the best debt that is available is through the General Fund.
Counselor Sinks.
So when you say the best debt, is that because it's 2% interest? And I'm just interested in how... So we get it from the General Fund, and we pay back with 2% interest on top of that? So...
Yes, that's correct. Over the course of time, Ray's team has evaluated multiple possibilities for obtaining debt, including the state's revolving fund, SRF funds. We've actually been in an application process for that for several sequences over the last couple of years. But the repayment terms and terms of interest at this point for SRF and other types of debt that we could take are significantly higher than the 2% that the General Fund is able to sustain.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more hands up, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this topic up here. Do we have any community members? Mr. Bruce?
I will be very quick. I live... My name is Brad Bruce, I live in Ward Two. I live right off of Pierce and Colfax, and if I'm reading this map right, that would be fixed as part of Phase Two or maybe even part of Phase Three. Regardless, I think this is fantastic because every time it rains even a little bit, the intersection at Pierce and Colfax floods like completely. It's difficult to traverse the intersection even with a car, and if you have a bicycle or a stroller or a walker or anything like that, there's no way you can even cross that intersection. So this is fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And may I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance oh-2025-10 on third and final reading?
Second.
Second and final reading.
And second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yep.
Any other council questions? All right, seeing none, go ahead. Please cast your votes. And that passes seven yeses and zero nos. And will a clerk please read 10C into the record?
Second reading and public hearing on Item 10C, oh, 2025-11, amending Title 10 of the Municipal Code to align with recent state legislation on use of electronic mobile devices and child restraint systems.
Okay, thank you. And we do not have a presentation on this particular topic this evening. I do not have anyone signed up up here to speak and public comment with regards to this issue. Would anyone like to speak? Nope. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this. Do we have any council questions or thoughts? Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. I was just curious... I know this is a state law change, and so wanted to get some more information about what information sharing in the community looks like, about the updates in the requirements for child restraints, and what resources might be helpful for people in adapting to this change, particularly as we're bringing it into our municipal fold as well.
Absolutely. And so, this was a... Oh, okay, sorry. Hi, I'm Patrick Freeman. I'm with the city attorney's office. So specifically, I work with the police department, and so that's why this has been brought through the police department. The changes actually occurred with the child restraint system through a House Bill from 2024. And when those changes were made, there was actually an educational component and information, you know, dissemination component to that bill. They're using specific NHTSA occu... I'm not going to be able to remember the exact words, but basically, passengers of vehicles grant funds that had already existed, and so they tasked CDOT with... And the Highway Safety Authority within CDOT to both disseminate information about child safety restraints, these changes, and also just kind of a general education campaign upon what, you know, are the most appropriate and safest portions of a, you know, child restraint system for this kind of graduated, you know, how old you are and how much you weigh and how tall you are.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor LeBir, did you want to vote before we... All right, seeing no more questions, and we've closed public comment. We did do... Do we do a motion? Motion... Can I have a motion, please?
I move for the adoption of ordinance oh-2025-11 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. All right, that passes seven yeses and zero nos. Okay, thank you, everybody. And with that, that was it for our votes this evening, so we'll now reopen public comment for anybody that has not spoken on public comment. If you'd like to come up, now would be the time. If you want to come up, okay. Mr. Rob, do you have a sign-in sheet up there? Or Bernie? So we can hear questions tonight, but public comment is actually not a back-and-forth dialogue, so you could also, if you'd like, to leave your questions with Mr. Goldstein here. We can get answers for you. Would you rather do that?
No.
No? Okay, perfect.
So my name's John Hunter. I live over on Cody Street, neighbor of Jeslin in Ward One, on the Mid-Lakewood Civic Association Board, and just had a couple of questions as a drive-by in our ward area. Jeslin's heard me say this before in Ward One meetings. Any further updates with regards to the vacant building on the west side of Wadsworth at 13th, and also any updates with regards to the building over here on the east side of Belmar Park with regards to, and I don't know if I pronounce this correctly, Cairoi and that situation? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, and we'll go ahead and close public comment. And we have no general business this evening, so this takes us on to our city council reports. And with that, we'll start with Ward Five.
Okay, well, we just had our ward meeting this past Saturday. We had a really good turnout, and we had a lot of good engagement in terms of questions and suggestions that I have captured and will be working on and following up on. Our next meeting will tentatively be the 26th, pending confirmation from Counselor LeBir, and that's really all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to acknowledge real quick one of our... Bruce, our active public commenter. You know, I agree, the City of Lakewood should stand up for American ideals and defend our Constitution, our former government. I think the White House's attack on judges, the attack on federal departments, congressionally approved appropriations like USAID, you know, really create uncertainty and chaos, and I saw a lot of that when I was in Washington DC the other week. And so I just wanted to just comment on that. I want to figure out a way to speak up about preserving our, you know, former government. There's obviously a lot of activity right now in places like DC, and we've got to figure out a way to be a part of that conversation. And so I also just want to kind of give a quick update. And so I also just want to kind of give a quick update on my experience there. I had a little bit of time to reflect on the trip. I had the privilege of representing our city in critical discussions in DC. We spoke about tax-exempt bonds, national debt, affordable housing, tax credits, CDBG funds, direct funding to local governments, and a number of other federal issues. And, you know, our advocacy efforts were really focused on a couple of key pressing priorities, opposing the federal administration's suggested downsizing, making it clear that good-paying jobs that provide essential services to veterans and so many more are a cornerstone of our community here in Lakewood. And ensuring the retention of vital federal assets in Colorado, including Space Force Headquarters and also more locally, the Federal Center here in Lakewood. Those are key, key issues. And in committee, we worked to advance the National League of Cities resolution that will help strengthen our position to lobby our congressional allies and protect these essential resources. I wanted to share with you one of my, one of the powerful takeaways I took from some of these meetings were just that our collective voice standing together is important. I had an opportunity to speak with leaders, you know, across the country, and the common theme emerged that we must speak as one, as a local government, and we should be at the table in these meaningful conversations. You know, we need to have a robust response to federal actions, and that those responses are not just beneficial, but they're necessary. And our, on Capitol Hill, our senators and congressional representatives reinforced that point. Their message was clear, they want our engagement. Federal decisions impacting our city will only reflect our priorities if we remain active and vocal and persistent in providing feedback to our delegations. So I just wanted to share with you all that I'm committed to ensuring that our city's voice remains strong and unified in these conversations. I deeply appreciate the support with all of your efforts, the mayor for being a great voice for Lakewood in DC, and then also our legislative committee for helping us navigate federal issues, and our deputy city manager for helping support the committee and council's advocacy efforts. So I just want to thank everybody for that collaborative effort. I hope I didn't go too long. Thanks.
Ward Three.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks all for bearing with me. I'm traveling this week, so appreciate being able to join virtually and participate virtually. Thank you for your comments, Counselor LeBeur. Support what you said and appreciate what you said. Just a couple of very quick Ward Three updates. As I think you all know, there is a special election on, maybe since Counselor Ryan, I believe, is also traveling this week, I'll make a plug for both Ward Three and Ward Four, the special election. And 7:00 PM tomorrow, right, Mayor? The mayor will correct me if I got that time wrong, but I'm sure it's 7:00 PM tomorrow is when the special election is over. So make sure to return your ballot at this point. It's really best to just drop it off at the drop-off locations. There's a couple in Ward Three and Four. If you haven't voted yet and you live in Ward Three or Four, make sure you vote. We have just scheduled our next Ward Three meeting in April. It's going to be Thursday, April 17th. We're going to have a breakfast at Sunrise Sunset at 8:30 AM, and that's 1424 South Wadsworth Boulevard, 8:30 AM. Travis Parker, our chief, I always want to make, like to make sure I don't butcher his title, our Chief of Sustainability and Community Development is going to join us. Thank you very much, Mr. Parker, to give an update on both the comprehensive plan and the zoning rewrite that are, that are moving in an exciting way, both to planning commission and council in the next few months. So that'll be a good chance to get an update on that. We should have a newly elected Ward Three co-counselor, so I'm hopeful that that new co-counselor will be able to join that meeting, pending scheduling, but that meeting is confirmed. So Thursday, April 17th, 8:30 AM, join us for that. The only other, just quick ad hoc thing I wanted to mention, because one, it did come up in one of the comments I heard. Just a reminder, there is a page on lakewood.org where you can get updates on the proposed development on 777 South Yarrow Street. I always forget like the URL short link, but if you just Google Lakewood Proposed Private Development, 777 South Yarrow Street, there's a page, it pops right up. It has some, a lot of additional information, it has FAQs, it has updates. And I did want to flag an update that happened just in the last couple of weeks, as of March 13th, that demolition, demolition of the existing building had begun, and that the review of the proposed apartment building continues with a planning commission public hearing now scheduled for May 7th. I do want to like confirm that that is, that is definitely a solid date, not a tentative date, but that is now up on the city webpage. So FYI, there is a planning commission hearing on that project tentatively scheduled for May 7th, for those wondering on what's going on with that. That's all I've got. Thanks so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward Two.
Thank you. Just to add to Counselor Lowe's comments, on that same Sustainability and Community Development website, there's also a page about 1221 Wadsworth. And so it has some of the updates about the new company that's working to develop that site. And so, yeah, that's helpful all up and down Wadsworth. And so I appreciate the staff for putting that together. Another thing I just wanted to highlight in regard to Counselor LeBeur's comments, that legislative committee was able to send a letter in collaboration with the mayor, with Counselor LeBeur, to NLC in DC, just speaking about the importance of the infrastructure grants, the importance of things like the Federal Center, and the importance of, you know, upholding the rule of law in our country. And so I am excited for our committee's continued work, both in the middle of our state legislative session, but also as we continue to navigate issues at the federal level. And so grateful to Counselor LeBeur for your leadership on that. Our Ward Two meeting, we had on March 8th, a couple of weeks ago, but I don't think we've been here since then. So that was a rousing time. Director Parker joined us there as well, in what ended up being a very small room. So thank you to everybody's patience who came and stood outside of the room. We will plan better for capacity next time, but we had a great conversation about the zoning updates. And our next meeting is going to be on April 12th at 2:30 PM at the Washington Heights Arts Center, and we'll be joined by our friends at Alameda Connects at that meeting. And I think that is all that I wanted to share.
Word One.
Thank you. Our ward meeting is April 12th. Typically, we have it the first Saturday. However, our facility was unavailable then, so we have it at Holy Shepherd Lutheran Church, 9th and Kipling. So not the first Saturday in April, but the second. And Travis Parker is making his rounds. He will be at our ward meeting as well to talk about zoning updates, et cetera. I also wanted to feature on that same day, April 12th, from 10 until 2, there's the Lakewood Cultural Center house party. And it's right over there at the Lakewood Cultural Center. And they have a lot of interesting things going on, different games and activities, fun for the whole family. So keep, you can go to the ward meeting and then come over to the cultural center. So a big Lakewood day on April 12th. That's all I have.
Just two more things to add. The residential parking permit is on, program is underway, so the pilot is starting in the Applewood neighborhood, helping to provide some relief for the residents around the Abruski's Restaurant. That there were a number of agencies that bid on that, and Public Works has been working really thoughtfully to get that underway. So excited to see that moving. And then Wright Park Construction has begun. So I want to just appreciate everyone in the community who helps support that master plan process. It will include dog park, nature-based playground, and 211 new trees being planted. So excited to have this amenity in Ward One. And that's it for me.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said, the beauty of going last. I do want to send thank you to Counselor LeBeur for representing us at the National League of Cities earlier this month, I guess that was last week, in Washington DC, and relaying the asks that we have. And want to send a, just a message out to our community. I mean, we know that we have thousands upon thousands of federal workers that exist in our area, that work in our area, and that oftentimes are living in our area alone. I think that, you know, most of us can probably, without really even thinking, can name on one hand a number of people that work for the federal government that live around us or, you know, work or recreate with us. So this is, to hear some of the big changes that are being talked about is a shock, to say the least. And I do want to send the message out to everybody that might be impacted. And with that, I will say that is, goes well beyond our federal employees. That extends to the places where our federal employees go to eat lunch. That extends to the hotels that some of our federal employees come and stay at when they're doing training at the Denver Fed Center. That is not happening right now. So we know, we're hearing about some of the shifts that are happening in the community that are making things harder for our residents and for our people that come into Lakewood to work for the day. So just wanted to let everybody know that we are, as a group, we are working collectively to do what we can. We have ears to the ground. We're trying really hard to know what's going on. That's not always easy. Information is not easily forthcoming right now, so we will continue to be on top of that. And I wanted to share that out to let everybody know that it is impacted. But also, I would offer the opportunity, if you are not someone that you would consider an impacted person, reach out to someone who is. They probably could use an ear. It's a very difficult time for them right now. And they're doing the work of the welfare of our country, and that means really important things. We're talking about wildfire mitigation. I mean, we've got the National Park Service, we've got Veterans Affairs, Social Security Administration, these are not small things. So these are people that are going to work, not sure that they're going to have a job next week, not sure if they're going to be able to pay their mortgage next month. So reach out, say hi, be a shoulder to cry on, an ear to listen to for a neighbor, and just know that, you know, we're going to continue to keep working hard to get the message out and to get the information that we can, so that we can do the best that we can for everybody that would potentially be impacted this year. And that is all that I have to say, since everybody else took the other stuff, so we'll let that happen. And with that being said, no further business to coming before the city council tonight. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:38.